To the Planning Commission meeting of February thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Why do I have this echo here? Um. Anyway, let's all do the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Madam City Clerk, can we have the roll call, please?
I'm going to do it today. Commissioner Feng, present. Commissioner Linsckog.
Present.
Commissioner Mistry.
Present.
Vice Chair Manipatla.
Here.
Chair Scharf.
Here.
All President and Attorney.
Chair Scharf, the video team is saying that if you can just turn down your volume on your laptop, that might help with the echo for the entire meeting.
Yes. Okay, so the first item on the agenda is to approve the December twelfth Planning Commission meeting minutes. So if you can all take a look at that for a second and someone make a motion.
So I make a motion to approve minutes of December twelfth Planning Commission meeting.
A second. Okay, vote with your lights.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, very good. Okay, now we, there are no postponements, are there, Madam City Clerk? No, okay. Oh, who should I be?
You should be talking to the Attorney.
Okay.
There are no postponements.
Okay, sorry. Okay, now it is time for oral communications. This is where a member of the public can speak on any item not on the agenda that's under the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. Do we have any blue cards? Great. So we have one in-person card. Welcome Jennifer Griffin. You have three minutes.
Good evening, Planning Commission. It's nice to see you all in the new year. Happy New Year to everyone who celebrates recently. I heard today that unfortunately Fontana's Italian restaurant is going to become housing. I'm really sad about that because we loved Fontana's and there aren't a lot of really good Italian restaurants left in Cupertino. We have to go outside the city to find good Italian food. But on that point, I wanted to bring up an issue concerning the RENA numbers. There is a gentleman named Mark Vervil, who I have heard present seen for the fifth time. There was a statewide town hall meeting Zoom last Thursday and he presented again. He is a retired CPA. He was a CEO and CFO for Disney and Warner. He lives in Santa Monica and he has been analyzing the HCD numbers, the RENA numbers. He believes that, quote, they're magic numbers. He has seen no methodology, nothing that would represent that there was anything, they were based on anything. And after having seen this five times, I am firmly convinced, my husband has a master's degree in statistics, and he has heard the Zooms at least three times and he confirms. I am very, very concerned that the RENA numbers were wrong. Maybe people didn't know this originally, but now that it is coming out that they are, the statewide population projections are flat and going down, we need to have the housing element halt. This has been asked before and it should be asked again. It's no one's fault. Whatever reason happened with the RENA numbers is only known to groups like ABAG, MTC, Sandag, and the Southern California SCAG. But we're the ones going through the fallout. There are people who have dedicated their jobs, meetings, et cetera, for the last several years trying to get certification from HCD. The first law of science is if you have flawed data, you stop the project. I have a BA in biochemistry and that is what we were taught over and over again. You stop, you analyze, and you start out again. So therefore, there are calls to have HCD stand down. If they do not stand down, then we are left to the conclusions that this was intentional and they are leading the people in this state astray. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Jennifer. We have one person on Zoom with their hand raised. Welcome San Ar. Except I cannot unmute you. Can you un, oh, okay, there it goes. Now, I still. Oh, okay, okay, now, San Ki, okay, here we go. Okay, go ahead. You need to unmute as well. Okay, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, good evening, Planning Commission and Chair. I wish to ask that you please not have these lightweight agendas where there's practically nothing on the agenda today, other than the ceremonial election of Chair and Vice Chair, which we have to sit and watch. The remaining item has almost no items that are under the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. Public Works is not under the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. Community Development is the only one. And so I ask you, the housing element has been long neglected. Why is it not on the Planning Commission agenda? Does the Chair have any input on setting the agenda for the Planning Commission? Why are we not reviewing the revisions, that are the many revisions that are happening to the housing element draft? I just spoke to Mayor Sheila yesterday and City Manager Pamela Wu, and I learned that staff are working with HCD on revising drafts. And why can't the Planning Commission be used to give visibility to what these changes are and to let the public give you input on these changes? We just learned recently that corner residential units can be now zoned for multifamily. That is alarming and we haven't heard that from you. We haven't heard that in City Council. I urge you, please do not cancel any Planning Commission meeting and please have a fully packed agenda and please have HCD on every Planning Commission agenda meeting so that the public may give you input on HCD drafts, on revisions, on changes, and most importantly, on the rezoning that is expected. Finally, I want to also add that on the topic of the election of Chair and Vice Chair, I urge you to please consider tenure on the Commission. There are a number of new members that have been added to this Planning Commission. Please consider the most tenured person.
Okay, just to point out, and the City Attorney's informed me, that's an agenda item. So if you wish to speak on that, you may speak on, you may speak on that agenda item.
I will stay away from that topic. I will restrict my comments to items not on agenda. I do, however, wish to also bring to your attention the fact that there was an exemption of CEQA that was offered as a settlement for a recent lawsuit filed against the city. Why did the city attorney not fight this lawsuit? An HCD draft has been submitted. The city is working in good faith with HCD. Multiple iterations of the housing element draft have been submitted. Why do we succumb and cave in? Why do we pay these salaries of our city legal staff if we're going to cave in? Why do we need legal staff at all? We should be fighting these lawsuits and CEQA is not something we want exemptions from. The city has already found significant amounts of toxic elements at the Valco site.
Okay, thank you. You're out of time. Thank you. Okay, we have nothing on consent. We did all see the written communications that were sent to us. There was, I think there was only one unless something else came in the last few minutes. So we are on to new business and the first item is the election of the Planning Commission Chair and Vice Chair, Committee Representatives and Meeting Schedule. So before, before we elect the Chair and Vice Chair, this is an agenda item and the public may speak on this. So if anyone wishes to speak on this item, please submit a blue card. Okay. Wel, oh, we have two, okay, oh, we have a lot, okay. Okay, so first we have Jennifer Griffin, welcome.
Good evening, Planning Commission again. Hi, I'm Jennifer Griffin. Been coming here twenty-five years since we annexed, and there were five years we spent in the county before. The county does have a Planning Commission too, if you weren't aware of that. Planning Commission is secondary to the City Council. I have been greatly concerned because in the last year, we have had many, many missed and skipped and planning commissions that were canceled. I have never seen that in twenty-five years. It is happening in other cities around the Bay Area and it's been happening in Santa Cruz County. I am on the situation that this time last year, we lost three of our established commissions, the Legislative Review Committee, the Design Review Committee, and the Environmental Review Committee. I am very, very concerned that there is an attempt to suppress the public's ability to speak. I have, because Legislative Review Committee was terminated for no reason, I have been forced to go outside of the city to get the information that I need to be an informed voter and decision maker about things that are happening in my California, my city, my state, my county, my country. I am very, very concerned now that HCD said a year ago, you must get rid of the Environmental Review Committee, the Design Review Committee, and Legislative Review Committee. They have done this in other cities. In Los Altos, they got rid of the story polls and the Environmental Review Committee last September. Berkeley had their Environmental Review Committee removed also. It is not the purview of a public agency like HCD to be weaponized and start threatening cities. That is not the way this country was set up. YIMBY Action announced recently that they are going countrywide. YIMBY Law said the same thing. What are we to believe? That HCD is going to rule the country? We, I, I don't know where we're going with this. I'm not really happy with how the state is being run right now. I, the, the city has spent a great deal of time and effort to get their certification from HCD, but HCD is acting like the mob. You have to do this and that. You have to rezone and get rid of public agencies to get certified.
You're out of time.
I wonder.
Okay, next is Jennifer Sheeran. Welcome Jennifer. And just a reminder that this agenda item is about the election of the Chair and Vice Chair and associated things.
Good evening, Planning Commissioners. Thank you for, for holding this meeting this evening. My name is Jennifer Sheeran and I'm currently the Chair of the Parks and Rec Commission, though I am here solely as a resident. I ask you tonight to elect, to vote for Commissioner Linsckog as your new Chair for the coming year. Commissioner Linsckog definitely has the requisite skills to be Chair. She's organized, comes prepared to the meetings. She has experienced chairing meetings for over twenty years, including being the Chair currently of the Walk By Copertino Organization, which is an organization of over twenty-five-hundred people. Her intelligence, thoughtfulness, and personal skills make her the best candidate for Chair this year. But more importantly, or maybe just as importantly, Commissioner Linsckog has some great ideas for the Commission to be more relevant and discuss topics pertinent to the Commission beyond voting on permits. One idea is to discuss a complete streets ordinance, much like one already in place in San Jose. A second is to review regulations and the permit processes for small businesses in our city. As you all, as we all know, we're under a budget crisis and these sorts of actions will help us potentially improve our budget problems. It may bring to light recommended changes which will ultimately benefit our small businesses. It's your, it's in your Commission's powers and functions to review and revise as necessary the general plan and to do these things and other things. Residents want this. I mean, you heard other residents talk about this this evening. They want the Commissions to be relevant and to be useful. Commissioner Linsckog as your Chair is someone who will not only agree with the residents that, that this Commission should be relevant and useful, but also has plans for how to make that actually happen. For all these reasons and more, I urge you to vote to make Commissioner Linsckog your Chair this coming year. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jennifer. Next, I have a little problem reading this. It looks like Herve Marcy or Harcy, welcome.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Herve Marcy. I am the Chair of the Bike Bed Commission in Cupertino, but speaking in my name only. I would like to urge the Commission to elect Seema Linsckog as the Chair. I've been knowing Commissioner Linsckog for two years now. I think she's extremely well qualified for this position. She has an intimate knowledge of the city and of the community and she stands up for the residents and for the good of the city. I think she has the leadership skills that are required and the tenacity to move projects forward. And more importantly, I think she has the integrity that is required for that position. For all these reasons, I urge the Commission to elect Commissioner Linsckog to the position of Chair because it is obviously the second most important Commission after the Bike Bed Commission. Thank you.
Next, welcome Helene Davis.
Good evening, Commissioners and Staff. I will be brief. I'm Helene Davis and I'm speaking as a longtime resident of Cupertino. So I'm here to advocate for Seema Linsckog to be your next Planning Commission Chair. I've had the opportunity to work with Seema on projects and I find her incredible capable, incredibly capable. She comes well-prepared and she weighs all of the different options and the input before coming to a decision or forming an opinion. And she would listen to all the stakeholders and work with others on the Commission to arrive at decisions that are best for your, for our community. She also runs an effective and efficient meeting, which is very important, as you know, being on a Commission. And you would be well-served to have Seema as your next Chair. Thank you for your consideration.
Hey, thank you, Helene. We have one hand raised on Zoom. Welcome San Ar.
Good evening, Planning Commission and Chair. I'd like to urge you to please nominate and elect as the Chair the most tenured person on the Commission right now. I would urge you to elect Moni Manipatla as the Chair of the Planning Commission and to elect current Chair Steve Scharf as the Vice Chair of the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission is perhaps the most difficult and challenging role and requires a delicate balance of time to prepare, time to study, and to make sure that public input is considered. The Commissioners engage and interact with the public and are not biased in their own opinions. When I listen to some of the more junior members on the Planning Commission, I feel like I'm on a bike and bed Commission. They advocate for their personal passions. This is not about your personal passions. This is about being a public servant in the service of the public. I do not see a dispassion from the newer Planning Commission members. Rather, I see inexperience and their old role speaking up in their new form. Please do not compromise on leadership of the Planning Commission. Please elect the most tenured and most neutral and balanced members on the Commission to the Chair and Vice Chair. This is too important a role to compromise, especially at a time when HCD is going to be putting pressure on the Planning Commission and the City Council to rezone properties to be in compliance with an approved housing element draft. This is not the time to give the keys to the city to someone who has been a developer and has inherent conflicts or someone who has an agenda that is primarily bike and bed focused. This is a time to give weightage to experience and to tenure and, most importantly, to people that engage and interact with the community. And on that front, I will once again urge you and applaud you, please elect as Chair the most tenured, Moni Manipatla and Stephen Scharf. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Maybe I should advance first, but we have, we have a staff report on this or just move on to the election?
Chair Scharf, members of the Commission, I think this is really, you explained it well. This is the election of the Chair and Vice Chair and also the reviewing and approval of the two thousand and twenty-four schedule. I think there's also one optional item of whether or not you'd want to select a Housing Committee or Housing Commission Liaison, which was not selected last year. That's not something you're obligated to do, but I understand was historically done.
Right, yeah, I think it's, I think it's a good idea. Okay, well, I guess I will open nominations for Chair. We do Chair first, I presume?
Yes, I would start with the Chair first.
I'd like to make a nomination. I'd like to nominate Commissioner Linsckog for the position of Planning Commission Chair.
Do you accept? I don't know if.
I have to accept.
Okay, I don't know. Okay.
Yeah, I'll accept.
Anyone else? I guess we need a second for that. Did someone second it? Okay, are there any other nominations?
Yeah, I'd like to nominate David Fong as a Chair and here is my rationale and I mean, David and I may not always agree and I've seen David in action in the past, not just to know this year, but in the past, you know, as a Planning Commissioner and Planning Commission Chair. And he is, you know, very, very knowledgeable. I think, you know, there are two people on this dais, you know, that knows in and out of, you know, municipal code, that's Stephen Scharf and, you know, David Fong. So I nominate David and, you know, he's very approachable and reasonable person to work with.
Okay, I will second that. Are there any other nominations? Oh, Seema, you can second it yourself too, if you wish.
Sure, I'll second myself.
Okay. Okay, so how do we do this in terms of voting? Not with our lights, I guess.
You, you could vote with your lights, but we would need to vote on the first motion, is that correct?
Do we vote on the first one or second one?
I'll defer to the City Attorney.
It's the replacement usually, get voted first, right?
Right, I mean.
Chair first and then Vice Chair second.
Right, right, I know it's Chair first and Vice Chair.
Chair first, but you know, do we vote on my proposal or not your proposal? Because mine came second.
Michael?
Is there a substitute motion?
Yeah, I think to be follow the substitute motion format, it would be the second motion from Commissioner Manipatla for David Fong as the Chair should be voted on first.
Okay, all right, so all in favor of David Fong, vote with your lights.
Okay. Motion carries with Linsckog and Mistry voting no.
Okay, so Michael, do we still have to vote again for, for Seema or how does this work?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, okay.
Yeah, it has, exactly.
Okay, so now we move on to the election of Vice Chair. Are there any nominations for Vice Chair? You know, I'll nominate Moni for Vice Chair.
I accept that.
Is there a second or not? Hey, there's no second. Okay, any other nominations for Vice Chair?
I'd like to nominate Commissioner Linsckog for Vice Chair. You know, unfortunately, she didn't win for the Chair, but I think she'd do an amazing job as the Vice Chair. She's very passionate about the role and just passionate about the city and I know she's, she would give all her efforts to, to the position.
Okay, is there a second for this?
I'll second that.
Okay. If there's no more nominations, so let's vote for Vice Chair, all in favor of Seema for Vice Chair, vote yes.
Oh, we need to clear the first.
Oh, clear, sorry.
That's one of your buttons.
Okay, so that.
Motion carries with Manipatla voting no.
Okay, so do we swap chairs now?
I don't believe you would swap chairs, Commissioner Scharf, but Chair Fong would just take over the duties from his, from his seat.
Welcome David.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. The next item on the agenda is item three, to discuss recommendations for the City Work Count, City Council Work Program items for two thousand and twenty-four, which are within the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission.
I just, I didn't know if you wanted to have consideration of the two thousand and twenty-four schedule, which was also included in the previous item and the choice of whether or not you wanted to appoint a Housing Commissioner.
Oh, okay, so that would, yeah, that would still be me. Yeah, so, well, I would nominate myself to be the liaison to the Housing Commission. Yeah, I think I have the experience necessary for, for that role and.
Yeah, I second that.
Any other nominations for the Housing Commission Liaison? Okay.
Well, I guess I'd like to nominate Commissioner Linsckog.
Oh, okay, so, that's fine. So, okay, so first, is there a second?
Do we have a second?
I'll second that as well.
Okay, all right, so first, let's vote for Seema for Housing Commission Liaison. Okay, Seema, congratulations.
Motion carries with Scharf and Manipatla voting no.
Okay, so the, the next part of this agenda item is the meeting schedule for two thousand and twenty-four. So is there a staff report on that? Can you put it on the screen? And hopefully we will have a lot more meetings.
I do not have anything to put up on the screen. I don't know if it's possible to do that. It's essentially staying the second and fourth Tuesdays, so that's not changing. And I believe in the staff report, there were holidays that were called out potentially for the Memorial Day, Thanksgiving, where there's often a conflict of dates, whether or not to cancel those now. or not to cancel those now, as well as I believe there is one that would be scheduled December 24th, when the city offices are closed. So those meetings typically don't happen in a calendar year, so you could decide to not hold those meetings this evening. Right, oh, excuse me, and the August recess, which was done last year, where the city council does not meet, nor do any other commissions. That is now part of the schedule, that there wouldn't be any meetings in August.
Okay, but that's already in that schedule, right?
Correct. There would be no regular meetings, correct.
Okay, so, yeah, I will make a motion then to approve the 2024 meeting schedule.
I'll second that. I guess the only, the only question is whether, whether we want to just, you know, cancel the ones that were adjacent.
Yeah.
The December, second meeting in December, and then it's, it's your guys' call on May and November. I think it's worthy of discussion.
I guess I'm confused. Do you want to just cancel the ones that are happening after the holidays, like the ones they called out, or you want to also the second Tuesday meetings in the same month?
Oh, I don't think there's any reason the second Tuesday should be okay.
Just the holiday ones, right? Yeah, no, that makes sense.
The ones adjacent to holidays.
It was May 28th and November 26th were the two in the staff report.
I mean, December. December 24th, of course. Three of them. I think, you know, we should leave it and then we can cancel it as we get closer. Because if there is an urgent item that needs to be discussed, then we have an opportunity, right?
I mean, I just, I kind of agree, but at the same time, all three of those, you're probably going to have an issue with getting enough commissioners up here, considering it's the day after, good, it's Christmas Eve. Nobody's going to come, even if you have an urgent meeting.
Nobody's going to come on Christmas.
Nobody's coming.
But we can cancel it as we get closer, right? We don't need to cancel it now.
Yeah, I guess the formality is not really important, but it does kind of irk me that we see cancellation for meetings that we already know are going to get canceled. Why create more work when we could just get rid of the meeting now? Form over substance here.
Has the council canceled these? Has the council canceled these meetings or are they still holding them on their calendar?
I do not know if they've canceled December, if they are on the Christmas time meeting. I would likely say there would not be a council meeting during the closure for probably that week and a half period.
Yeah, I'm okay with canceling.
Yeah, I mean, I agree with Jesh because it is more work for the chair because he has to meet with the staff just to say there's no meeting and he's got to have, you know. So, yeah, I'm fine with that. Okay.
I think that as a practical matter, if we cancel those meetings, then, you know, staff, for instance, can assume that those are going to be days when we don't have meetings. So particularly the 24th of December, I mean...
Right.
But, but it's interesting, I think the interesting question there really would be the, you know, I don't know, the May one seemed more likely, but to be one where there might be, you know, matters before the commission.
Yeah, that is true. I know Pew has said there's a lot of things coming up, and the reason why we haven't had a lot of meetings is because a lot of these development projects have not been ready to come to planning yet. So you're right, May, maybe we should keep May.
Yeah.
Cancel November and December. Sure. That sounds fair.
Send a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to cancel the November and December fourth Tuesday meetings.
I'll second that.
Okay, vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, the second one here, the municipal code 2.32 planning commission, what is, what are we supposed to do with that one or is that?
I believe that attachment was just included because that describes the planning commission, the role of the commission and how you would go through the selection process.
All right, very good. All right, so now I can pass it to David, correct?
Correct.
Okay, great. All right. So we'll move to item three, to discuss recommendations for the city work program items for 2024, which are within the jurisdiction of the planning commission. We have included in that packet the adopted city work program. Is there a staff report on this?
Yeah, I think the staff report again is fairly self-explanatory. It looks at the city work program that was approved last year. There's 24 items, 15 of which were budgeted. On the attachment to the staff report, they're broken down, I think into A and B, the first 15 being the ones that are actually funded. All of these were part of the work program. Just the first 15 have funds. So what we're looking for tonight is the commission's consideration of the items pertinent to the planning commission. And if we could essentially say which of the three, I believe there's maybe just four or five between the A and B schedule, so there's not a lot, but which of, if there's consensus about which of the three would be the items most important that should be getting worked on. And again, they could come from either the funded list or the non-funded list.
And just to clarify, this will be recommendations to the city council as to which items you would recommend.
Great. We have one blue card for oral communication, that is Jennifer Griffin.
You were the chair before on the planning commission. I'm glad to see you back again. Anyway, hi, planning commission, I'm Jennifer Griffin, and as we start out in the new year, I was on the Stevens Creek Boulevard bus tour with some of the officials last Thursday. Was very enlightening. It went from Daradon Station to Tienza College, and I learned a lot about the different issues in the city. And then we came into Cupertino, and Cupertino is the only city that had a median with trees other than a section over by Valley Fair that had palm trees on it. And I am going to say again that we need to do everything possible to protect our heart of the city. I have personally spent years of my life, good years of my life, attempting to make sure that that stays there. A lot of people want to do different things with Stevens Creek Boulevard, but there have been many, many people who have spent a great deal of their lives protecting the median. And I do think that it is, I think the other cities need to be respectful, HCD needs to be respectful and realize that a lot of people in this city have spent a great years of their lives, and this is the way a lot of people lot would like to present Cupertino. It is not up to the state to tell us we have to cut down all of our trees in the median. That is interference from Sacramento. That is not the way this country was set up. If they want to change the laws, then we have to vote on it. But in that regard, I did send an email a month ago to the city council suggesting that we have a study session on the issues with the RENA. I was asked to do this. So far, we have not had a study session, and I will tell you right now, I have my ballot all ready. Because I do not have a great deal of confidence in how the state is being run, it is going to affect how I vote. I am voting no on proposition one. I didn't think that I would, but I don't have any belief that our governor is going to be able to fund what he says he's trying to do. It's a shame, but I have no faith in our governor. I hope that we can make sure that we maintain things in Cupertino. I have zero faith in HCD. The housing element needs to stop, and I really do not want my city rezoned. Portola Valley just got their certification, but it was very questionable. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have anybody?
Right.
You have two.
I'm doing this for David since I have Zoom open. San R, you're first, and the Zoom people.
Yes, good evening, planning commission and new chair. I wish good luck to the new chair and certainly appreciate the, the choice of David Fong in this new role and wish him all the best. I hope to also see him succeed in a Cupertino C-TAD role where I'd like to see him engage more with the public, but certainly on this planning commission as chair. Congratulations on that. On the agenda item at hand right now, it's unclear to the public which items on the list of work plan items, as well as those not on the work plan, are actually under the purview of the planning commission. So it would be helpful for staff to maybe make some clarifying comments on what items are under the purview of the planning commission tonight for input. I would, I would hazard a guess that it is items tagged as community development. I believe Public Works is not under the purview of planning commission, and I believe the remaining items may not be under the purview, so that's a very limited list. For the items not currently on the work plan, the attachment that has items not currently on the work plan, that is completely unclear what, what jurisdiction or which commission's jurisdiction they come under. So again, would appreciate some clarifying comments from staff so that the public can offer input on that. In general, I would, not knowing what jurisdictions exist, I would ask you to support the high school internship, high school and youth internship that is not on the work plan right now and to support that. I believe engagement with residents through internship programs is a way to build shared empathy for the challenges and opportunities that staff face and to allow the community to really have skin in the game in the role that staff play. And I think as a community, we will be more successful when we work together and staff don't need to deal with residences as the other side. This is not about staff versus residents, this is about us working together to make each other successful. So I'd recommend the high school internship that is not on the PWT to be considered for inclusion. I would also offer up that for the items that are on the list under the purview of community development, the list itself is fairly, fairly lightweight. I look at this list and it really, really does not inspire confidence in the priorities that, that the city has selected. However, given the limited choices here, I would say certainly please prioritize the tree list. It's alarming that you're looking to cut costs on city street trees. We have a fantastic Department of City Street Trees. Please maintain the city street tree program and save the project for the tree list and the tree list development there as well. So that's in the community development.
You're out of time.
Thank you.
Next is Babu. Welcome, Babu.
Thanks for giving the opportunity. I just wanted to again insist on city council members getting engaged with the trusty area mapping and help the pension from Montavista High Schoolers. And another note, I just noticed you people canceled the unanimously November and December meetings. So on any meeting, is there anything why we are scheduling, we can cancel it until upfront like seven months or 10 months before? And what is the purpose of the meeting if that can be done like that? Because any service, necessary service, if it is out for more than a day, then the next day is considered as a working day. So at least keep it, and you can always cancel it if there is no request, because the meetings are for serving the public. And probably on that day, a week before, if you don't have any applications, then you can cancel the meetings. I didn't get a hang of it, what is the background? But I appreciate when we have a scheduled calendar, we need to take into account public holidays and schedule it, not just cancel it. So you can adjust the calendar, but not this type of unanimous decision for canceling engagement meeting. Correct me if I'm wrong, let me go through it again. And again, I urge you people to have engagement with the community and ensure the community voices echoed at every level. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Were there any other?
No.
All right, that completes the oral communications. Great, so we'll bring it back up. How shall we, how shall we discuss this? Any suggestions?
If it would help, I know one of the speakers had mentioned going over the list of projects. I would say that's accurate as a community development department, which is planning, building, housing and code enforcement. That's really the purview of this commission. Things certainly could expand beyond that, but I think on the list and what's mentioned in the staff report, you'd have the tree list, which involves both private and public property trees. So that would be looking at rights of way as well as private property. And I believe the focus of that is looking at appropriate tree species primarily, not so much screening and privacy issues, but trees more appropriate to the climate and that, you know, especially in the public right of way that are compatible with that. There is also the heart of the city specific plan update, which I believe is on the 2425 fiscal year. It's one of the unfunded projects. The reason for that primarily being was that was seen as a successor to the housing element, which is also one of the projects, but I can say that is very much underway and is in the latter stages at this point. So you may want to consider that when you're looking at the three projects, because that's all well along at this point. There's also the below market rate housing focusing on extremely low income, so that would be individuals or households earning up to 30% of the area median income. And that would be looking at a range of things such as preserving housing, providing housing, looking essentially at opportunities to really target the lower income levels, which are often the most difficult to get in Santa Clara County and cities like Cupertino. There's also the issue of privacy screening and balconies, which I know has come up for some time. And I believe there were two items mentioned in the staff report that are not on the work program but have been formally. One was development accountability is referenced, I didn't see it on the matrix. The development accountability, I believe, was going to looking at projects that had received entitlements and trying to create incentives for the developers to actually build them. But again, I don't think that is currently on the work program anymore, but I saw it in the staff report. Also, an update to the city sign ordinance, which I know is something we have been looking at trying to define a scope of work, whether it would be comprehensive or not. But those were the items in total, so it's really one, two, seven items. And the housing element, again, I would say is certainly an active project, so six.
Just a question on this. So the ones that are, have, that have an estimated budget and they've got a timeline, they're essentially already committed to, right? Does that?
Yes, that would be the city council last spring when they considered these. Of the 24, they all stayed active, the ones that have a budget assigned to them and though are essentially truly the active projects, they're not on hold.
Okay, so bias recommending that they're, look at things that are already budgeted for and have a timeline for, it's kind of pointless.
I think it's just reinforcing that you want those to proceed, that those would remain the priority projects.
Got it, okay.
The best way to look at this is like, you know, given all the challenges that we have, budget challenges, and maybe, you know, there are some things, you know, that we need to reprioritize. Things are in flight, but, you know, revisit, you know, every now and then, you know, to see if we need to halt something.
Correct. I mean, in a lot of ways, it's prioritizing too.
Do you have some more detail on the, I guess it's number two under medium, the preserve existing and development of new BMR and ELI housing? Is that, and there's a, I mean, a decent sized budget of $250,000, is that essentially like consulting and research fees?
Staff consulting, research, right now, there's no scope for that project. So it could look at, again, a range of issues, but it would be focusing on that extremely low income group.
Okay. And does it overlap a lot with what's already happening with the housing element? Because it seems to be discussing a similar topic.
I think it would be taking what might be defined in the housing element and, and looking at implementing it. Because the housing element, you're largely looking at, say, policies and strategies.
Yeah.
This would be looking at a program to implement those.
Got it, okay.
I think historically, there's, there was a lot of discussion, and I think this was particularly looked at in my previous term on the planning commission with, with the Valco, General Plan Amendment. There was a review of the state of low market rate housing. So, you know, the mechanism for a lot of the low... So, you know, the mechanism for a lot of low market rate housing, it's about 250 units, about half and half for sale and rental. Those are below market rate by virtue of having a deed restriction that requires it. And I think that the issue that had been raised in the past was the deed restriction was close to expiring on many of those properties. So it used to be the convention was 30 years.
Right.
Now, it's 99 now for a lot of the new ones, 50 or 99.
Yeah, that is correct. So there's a lot of units that were built a few decades ago that now their due date is coming up. They could lapse being BMR units, whereas units we're approving today are typically 99.
Yeah.
Always at least 55.
I think, and correct me if I'm wrong on this, you were involved with this as well. I think the Hamptons has some units which were actually expiring.
Right, right. Yeah, the Hamptons does, and, you know, we believed that they were going to build their new project because they were still grandfathered into 10% for rental. And if they don't start soon, then, you know, maybe, I don't know, maybe they're never going to build, who knows? Even though they said if the market picked up for rental properties that they would build, but, yeah, we don't know, you know, what's going to happen with that. But it's true, a lot of the BMR rental housing is expiring soon, and a lot of the newer projects are for sale housing, so there will not be replacement BMR units, you know, for a while, you know, until maybe Valco gets built, if it gets built. Yeah, I mean, this is a difficult issue, you know.
Yeah, it is particularly the for sale BMR housing targets higher income area.
Compared to rentals, yeah.
Yeah, somebody who is extremely low income probably cannot qualify for a mortgage.
Yeah. And for ELI, in the housing element, it's low, very low and moderate. It's not extremely low, is it?
Correct. Extremely low is essentially a subset of very low, which goes, I forget the percentage, like 30 to 50%. So extremely low is not called out as a separate category in the housing element. It stops at very low.
Okay.
Yeah.
So if you're done with that one, so I have a question on one of the items. The dogs off leash area program listed as in a high priority, can you shed some light on, you know, what it is? Is it the one that's, you know, being, study being conducted at Jolliman Park, or is it, you know, more parks to do the same?
You know, I'm sorry, I wish I knew more about that, because that's mostly a Parks and Rec Commission item. If I had more background, I'd be happy to share it.
Okay. It's just a lot of money for it, right?
Yeah, it's a lot of money tied, and, you know.
Yeah, it seems a bit odd.
And I know the one in Jolliman Park is going okay, but then we do hear a lot of complaints from residents, you know, not following the, and also, you know, there's a lot of pushback on expanding it to other parks. So I think, you know, we should stick with another one park, that just, you know, me, based on listening to the residents, so.
So I've actually spent some time in each of the dolas talking to the residents, because I heard about that as well, and I know this is a Parks and Rec issue, but my understanding is there's a couple of residents that are providing most of the negative feedback, and from talking to the residents who go to the dolas, the overwhelming sentiment seems to be positive. So, I mean, you know, it's a topic that doesn't concern us today anyway, but just kind of trying to put the record straight on that.
Yeah, no, my record on that one is, you know, yeah, I'm just not talking to the dog owners, I'm talking to, you know, the regular residents as well, and, you know, a lot of people.
Yeah, they've done a survey of residents around the dola, and my understanding is there hasn't been any kind of pushback to the extent that you're talking about. But again, we can table that.
And to return back to the jurisdiction of the planning commission?
Yeah.
So Commissioner Mistri, your discussion about ELI, it currently is on Attachment A, which is on the city council's work plan, and is currently identified as medium priority. Here's this opportunity for this body to decide, to recommend to either elevate it, reduce it, or keep it as is. And there are a number, there are a small handful of things here that's identified as high, medium, low. This is your opportunity to focus on those things within the commission's jurisdiction to make your recommendation. Right. But I guess I'm confused on what the end goal of that project is. Is it to identify lots or parcels that could be used to build more housing? Is it to find and incentivize developers to actually do, to build? It seems like a very vague use of money on something that sounds a bit dubious to me, honestly.
Yeah, I think it is looking at all of those things. It would be looking at sites.
Yeah.
Certainly that, but also means of preserving, as we had talked about, units that in the next decade.
Right.
You could have the BMR protections lapsing. So it would be looking at all those. It would be a range of things, essentially defining a program.
I guess if the scope was more narrow, I would feel more comfortable with the amount of money that's been allocated to it. It just seems like a black hole.
Okay. I guess one of the things we could do, so one way we could do this is, it probably doesn't make sense, unless people would like to just comment on the ones that are not in planning commission scope, perhaps we should just run the list of items that were in the, in the staff report and just get some feedback. I think there's also the question of, is there something that we ought to mention that, you know, is there anything we'd want to add for consideration?
Yeah, because I mean, I guess to respond to that, it sounds like if the city council already has these things with the budget allocated, we're just repeating what they're already planning to do, so I don't see the point of spending the time going over those, because we're not benefiting anybody by saying that we already agree with something that they're already going to do. So if I were to suggest instead, we just spend time talking about things that we might want to add to their work plan, and see if there's any merits to that amongst us.
Yeah, I concur with that approach. I think it'll be more efficient.
Just to be efficient. So if, yeah, sorry, go ahead, Stephen.
Oh, it's just what was said about changing the priority, because personally, I think the housing element update should not be medium priority, it should be high priority. The other two, yeah, you're right, those, you know, the city council already approved it, you know, it's been discussed for years and years about developing more ELI housing. There's not much we can do about it.
Right.
But the housing element update, I think we really should have a lot more input on.
You're talking about the one in the blue, in the medium?
Right, in the medium. Yeah, I would elevate that to high personally, but.
But is there even any point? I mean, that housing element is essentially done. This is, that would just be, it's not like we're asking them to make this a higher priority project. It's already, we're past that.
No, I think, well, I'm not sure, because they've kind of not been forthcoming with what's going on with HCD and what the feedback has been on the latest submission. So it's possible there is some input for us to put in, but we don't know.
But that's a different topic, though, right? In terms of, that's not a city priority, that's more of a bringing that to the planning commission, or giving visibility to the planning commission, right?
I mean, the housing element update is definitely a priority for the city, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I don't disagree with that. I'm just saying, you know, saying that it's a higher priority is not necessarily going to increase the visibility to the planning.
Yeah, yeah, that, you may, right. So what is the point of ranking these at all, then?
Hey, there's no point, as far as I can see. We're not offering anything that's going to change what the city council is going to do.
Perhaps it's just a question of if the money is out of sync.
Right.
You know, that would be the prioritization then.
But even they hold the cards as far as what the budgeted amount is, right? So why are we, I don't, I don't see the, I don't get it.
I mean, from my perspective, I think the housing element is clearly a high priority for the city already, so I don't know that we need to call out that it's a high priority. I think we're better served saying, is there anything that we would add?
Yeah.
In, you know, like, what would be our top three, right? Either from this list or something new. So I think let's just focus on if anybody has any thoughts on, you know, on that.
Yeah.
So we're not going to discuss the money allocation here?
I don't, I don't see why.
Yeah, because I agree with you, it seems very high for the, that for item about preserving the BMR ELI housing, because it's not money going to actually build any housing.
No, no.
It's just.
That would pay for maybe one apartment.
No, it wouldn't even pay for that. One apartment's about $800,000.
Yeah, I think the goal was with the other commissions, because I believe all of them have already weighed in on their areas, was just to pick three things.
Sure.
Whether they're ranked or not, but three things, which do you think would be the, those would be the important ones.
So can I suggest or offer one? This would be a very small project. So one thing that I'm personally passionate about, but I think as a state we all are, is just saving water, water conservation in general. So one thing I was considering or thought about is from a city ordinance to require that all new housing projects, all new construction has gray water included as some aspect of the building construction. So the easiest is the one that California already approves without a permit, which is laundry to, what's it called, laundry to landscape. Doesn't require a permit set to give you that valve, which takes your wastewater from the washing machine and going straight into your landscaping. So something as easy as making it required that every new home that's built has that valve put in and the infrastructure for the water to go out, just because it's a super easy couple hundred dollar thing, but once you have it, it's done, and you don't have to call somebody in to do a retrofit afterwards.
Are you saying for all new residential construction, or residential and commercial?
Oh, I don't know how you would manage this in commercial. Yeah, just probably residential. I know back when, last year, we approved the Apple project, the one that's coming in on Valco, they're doing a really massive gray water system, right? But that's because they're spending more money than they need to, they're going above and beyond what the requirements are. So I don't know if we would request that from new housing yet, because I don't even think California law is up to that for homes, right? I think it's nowhere near.
It's not a requirement of the building code yet, no.
Yeah, so I think we would be stepping out of line.
So I would actually, I would actually put that in the category, it's been before the planning commission before to have kind of enhanced reach goals that we would encourage, you know, and I think the planning commission is actually the right place to investigate proposals for what are the, what are the reach goals that we'd like to do, you know, focused on water. And, you know, there's actually a lot on fossil fuel and carbon reduction as well. I had one, maybe I blurt it out here, it actually came up in the session, in the last council session, council member Moore had raised a question about supporting heat pump water heaters, you know, and actually, it's an interesting coincidence, I worked it out for many years. One of the people I worked with is actually an advocate in Palo Alto who worked on their new, their new policy, where they were attempting to have 1,000 heat pump water heaters installed as a alternative to gas, gas fixtures. And they basically have a mechanism where they're, they're paying people, there's a rebate, which helps pay, you know, the water heater itself's a little more expensive, not a big deal, but requires electrical.
Right, but this is an incentive to get like the first folks to get on board with it, right? And see if it works.
Yeah, and their particular, their focus is actually in a very specific area, he was a real, this friend of mine, Bruce, is a real believer in, there are things that, I guess he calls it captured systems or something, where when you put a water heater in, it will be there for 10 or 15 years. So if you can, if you can divert that stream now, that would be something.
So I'm a huge fan of heat pump water heaters. I'm on the Rotary Climate Action Committee where we actually working to install heat pump water heaters. So there's a lot of rebates available right now that make it basically free for anybody who wants to install one right now. So I guess I'm trying to understand what would the planning commission bring to that?
So I actually think the model for, and this would probably be true for gray water as well, when the, the city is reviewing fees right now for building, and this would be a place where, you know, if you make a statement, when we reevaluate these fees, perhaps we want to pick up a low market rate fee for the things that we want to encourage.
Right, or even make them free.
Yeah. And then there's also an element to this, which PG&E tried, not PG&E, it's the energy company in Sacramento, had tried the same thing with HVAC heat pumps, and found that it's basically, nobody paid attention to their program until their, you know, furnace broke, and then they just wanted another furnace.
Right.
And that immediately led to the capture program, but by creating the incentive when they're going to get a permit, that actually may be able to cause people to switch. Even if, I mean, I think the danger in Palo Alto, of course, they literally are paying people, they're literally giving money to people, and I don't think that Cupertino really can do that or would want to consider.
Not with our current budget, no.
They're their own utility company, too.
But I think to build on your idea, maybe another way, another thing we can do besides reduce fees, because I know we have a budget crunch, that may not be the most popular thing right now, but maybe we can do, you know, streamlined permitting, online permitting, or straight over the counter permitting, you know, it's like expedited permitting or something like that for the laundry.
Anything that's green related.
For the laundry to landscape or.
Or even to have a process where people can raise those things. So I think that that would be, you know, what we're doing here is not trying to say, oh, you know, on this date, we want to have a meeting. But the interesting question is, you know, can we, can we express a preference that we'd like to agendize, you know, having a discussion around that, around what kinds of things have been done, what kinds of things could we do, and have an opportunity, you know, to speak with the public about that.
If I were to formulate that.
Just to turn this back to the agenda, it's to identify three items to recommend to the city council to add to the work program for 2024.
So I think the agenda item coming out of this is a expedited permit process with, combined with reduced or eliminated fees for climate positive.
Home improvements.
Home improvements like laundry to landscape, gray water capture system, or a heat pump water heater, or heat pump HVAC.
Or even electric stoves and electric, other electric appliances.
Right.
Yeah.
So I thought the fees that are charged are supposed to be set to cover the costs to the city. So if we, if you do reduce fees, you know, especially in this situation, we're essentially subsidizing from the general fund those things, so.
Yeah.
I don't.
I agree with you, Stephen.
I would be a little worried about that, especially considering the budget.
I think we could focus on the part about streamlining or expediting those permits, so it may not, may not be about how much the actual fee is, but the, like, the hidden fees of going through the permitting process, which may be extra red tape that the homeowner has to go through, even though it's not a check.
Yeah, okay.
Because that's not going to cost the city any lost revenue, but it may save the homeowner a significant amount of money.
Well, it may require more staff members in the planning department to do that, kind of.
Yeah, it's something I think, but I think the point is for somebody to investigate that whether this is actually feasible and would actually help the city.
Yeah, I was just going to say that that would probably be the first step, is feasibility, and I think some of it, as several commissioners mentioned, there may be other sources to offset the costs.
Yeah.
That already exists, because I don't think the city is in a good position to do anything to hold back costs.
Right.
A lot, the primary driver for the current fee study was improved cost recovery. So, but maybe there's other ways to incentivize people going for the climate positive, whatever this range of things that we could look at.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's certainly from a financial standpoint, I understand the council, you know, if, if we are losing money in the permitting process, then they should address that, but, you know, this may be, this may be a factor in consideration about, about whether, you know, whether we choose to lose money there.
Yeah.
I think there's also an element too that's, that is, things that are focused at existing residents and homeowners today versus new construction as well, that may be, again, something.
Rettrofit, you mean, or from another?
Well, just in terms of the kinds of programs that derive from this, this sort of thing. You know, yeah, it would be, you know, you have a lot, particularly for water usage, you have a lot of opportunity when somebody's building a new, you know, a new complex, but, you know, there is broader, you know, there can be broader impact, you know, when it's individual homeowners.
Yeah, yeah.
So I have a couple of ideas that I wanted to pass by, so I don't know, can I share my screen?
Sure.
How do I do that? Or do I join the Zoom?
Yeah, I think if you joined Zoom.
Oh.
Yeah, I think you have. And then share, and then share your screen.
Okay.
I'll be sure to get my password fixed tomorrow. I found that my, I have my password set to get to Cupertino email on my work computer, but not on my personal, so. email on my work computer, but not on my personal, so.
So, do we have the opportunity, the opportunity to add things that are not on this list as well? Okay.
Yes, you do.
While you're doing that, Seema, there's, this is kind of a combination of public safety, housing and planning. And it was brought up to the city council a while ago, but because of the pandemic, we didn't do anything. It's regarding the RV and oversized vehicle parking that's been kind of taking over the city in certain areas.
Near Target?
Right, there and a couple of other places, you know, trying to find them supportive housing or transitional housing. Because it actually is affecting public safety now. I, I don't know if the planning commission would be the impetus behind ordinances regarding oversized vehicles or, or what.
Not things focusing on the vehicles themselves. I think that gets more into a safety issue, possibly code enforcement, but definitely a safety issue. A lot of that would be pulling in law enforcement to some degree.
What about, you know, the parking, on-street parking ordinance type of thing, like, you know, these are the rules and, you know, and we want to modify them in a way that, you know, it doesn't get abused.
But is the issue that these RVs are parked in private parking or they're on?
On, on-street parking, but you know, they're parked, you know.
No, no, right, but so if it's on-street parking, we don't have any, the planning commission doesn't have anything to do with that.
I mean, it is public property. It's city-owned property. The planning commission and you, you tend to think if you're looking at private development. In private use of land, which obviously can trickle over and have impacts onto public land, but you know, I think parking does get a little complicated because you have safety issues which become law enforcement issues and then you have just the ability to park on a publicly owned right of way. Which is something that's generally not limited unless there's something in enforcement already, so. I mean, I do think this is straying from the planning commission's focus where we're looking at. How are we altering parking in the public right of way?
Okay, so I just put together some thoughts and I apologize if it looks a little too neat. It's because I can't help myself after thirty years in the corporate world. It has to look nice. Okay, so, uh, just a few ideas that I wanted to pass by you guys. Uh, one is a complete streets ordinance. San Jose, city of San Jose actually has a really nice, very comprehensive, very reasonable municipal code section that addresses complete streets. And it, it has caveats if the street is too narrow or too wide. And so, it, they really take into consideration all of the, the possible issues that could come up. But the idea is to make the streets serve all of the constituents, not just the cars, but we're talking transit users, pedestrians, youth, seniors, businesses, ADA, bicyclists, et cetera. So, that is one thing. I mean, I think it would not require a ton of our staff time. I, I may be overstating it, but it's, it's there. It's written. It's been vetted and adopted by the city of San Jose. So, we could probably quick adapt it versus writing it from scratch. So, I think that's kind of a low hanging fruit.
Can I ask a question about this one? How does it impact existing streets?
It doesn't. So, the way San Jose has written it is you don't have to go out and do anything right off the bat, but if you touch a street, like if you're restriping it or you're digging it up or something like that, you have to look at whether it's possible to make it into a complete street where you have adequate sidewalk, if you have, you know, if there's room to add bike lanes, you consider adding bike lanes. So, it doesn't obligate the city to automatically do that on any street they touch, but they have to consider it. Basically, it's kind of how it's written. So, so that's, that's one I would like to recommend.
Totally supportive of that. I, I think, again, kind of thinking about how we might frame this. You know, maybe the planning commission would want to have a request to understand what, what other communities are doing. You know, just so we have a flavor of what does that, you know, what does that mean? There was an experiment on Mary, right? That was a complete street. Design philosophy, although I, I think that got removed after.
No, I think it's still. Yeah, they, they have bike lanes behind the, the.
Oh, that's right, yeah, that's right.
So, so, do, do we want to discuss this before I go to?
No, no, I, I think it's a great idea and it actually does go back to what I discussed a little earlier with the, you know, we should be using the streets for bicycles and pedestrians and cars. We shouldn't be turning publicly owned streets into other uses.
Permanent parking.
Permanent parking. You know, that's not what they're designed for.
Yeah, so that actually could become part of that. Yeah, that's a good point.
Yeah, I like this.
Okay, next one is a small business revitalization ordinance. So, again, this is something that other cities have been doing similar things, like San Francisco has passed a couple of different legislations. So, this would be an ordinance to help support our small businesses, help fill our vacant storefronts and really kind of create a more thriving city. So, examples of the things we could put in there is, you know, again, reduce the amount of effort it takes to do permitting. So, increase the number of online permits, streamline the permitting process for small business specific things, streamline outdoor dining proposals. Like, you know, create a more easier process for pop-up shops or food trucks. Outdoor music. I was in Los Altos downtown recently. And if you walk down Los Altos, there were three different little, uh, little, small, like mom and pop, like music acts happening outside restaurants and, and shops. And it was wonderful. It was amazing. I mean, it was just like, why don't we have that kind of stuff? So, make it easier to do that kind of permitting. Make it easier to do streetscape improvements like benches and landscaping outside the small businesses. So, basically, you know, just look at what would make it easier for small business to operate in our city and, and create an ordinance around that.
Do, do we know whatever happened to the food truck ordinance? I mean, this was years and years ago and the restaurants were saying, no, we don't want it because it's not fair and but it's been like fi- five or six years since it was brought up.
Right, so that's just before.
PU's not here today because, I mean, there was a famous haircut truck that would go to Apple.
The company making pizza on the street too that went out of business, so.
There is a dog vet in San Francisco in a truck. It's really cool. Okay, uh, the third one is simplifying permits for minor repairs and small projects. So, in preparation for this meeting, I reached out to a few residents and I'm just gonna ask them, like, what are things that, you know, are pet peeves and, and problems that you run into and I wanna, I wanna show that because I actually captured a couple of residents' stories. So, one of them, uh, the resident was telling me about how they were trying to, this is a commercial property where that person works and a non-residential property, it's not commercial, sorry. And they, they tried to get permits and for landscaping. And then during the inspection, the city, city building inspector came in and said, oh, wait, no, you have to get your bathrooms updated also. And that's going to be another fifty thousand dollars. And which doubled the cost of the project. So, they ended up not doing anything, none of that. And, and now they, they've been looking at adding a closet, uh, which would require a small fake wall. But they're, they're afraid of touching it. They're afraid of coming in front of the city and getting a permit because they're afraid that it's going to turn into, oh, you have to update your bathroom and you have to update this and you have to update that. Another resident I spoke to mentioned they wanted to replace the bathroom fan in their bathroom. And so, they were trying to do the right thing, went to the city to get a permit for the bathroom fan. And the person they spoke to said, well, how long ago was your bathroom updated? And they said, well, it was, it's been ten plus years. So, they said, okay, well, in order to get the permit for the, the bathroom fan, you have to update your toilet. And you are to a low-flow toilet and you have to update your shower to a low-flow shower. And they have a colored toilet, so the whole thing turns into a whole bathroom remodel for the, because they want to do the bathroom fan, so.
Wait, wait, are you saying that if your bathroom fan breaks and you change it, you have to get a permit for that?
Apparently, yeah.
Okay.
So, my proposal is, uh, so this seems to be an issue. And, and I think it's also a revenue issue for the city of Cupertino, because if people are running into these kinds of problems, then they're not, they're likely to just do the work without getting a permit. So, there's probably a lot of work happening without permits. And if we just made it easier and we increased the number of, again, online permits or streamlined the permit process for small repairs and small projects in single-family homes. And we keep the permit scope to what the permit is about. So, we don't allow permits, permit creep, I guess, where it's like, oh, you want to change the bathroom fan, now you're gonna have to do fifty thousand dollar remodel. So, that's my third proposal.
Yeah, I, I agree with that, you know, I think, you know, we should look at things, you know, in the perspective of, you know, what the resident is asking for and, you know, not tack on, you know, ten other things and, and discourage residents and, you know, make them go do whatever they want or not do it at all. That's just, you know, bad. So, I didn't know that, that was happening and, you know, I think, you know, we should fix that.
Are, are any of these state laws though? I know like if you, if you add a room and need an a new vent for your air conditioner, you have to get the whole house pressure tested because you're touching the AC and that's not something we would even have jurisdiction over. That's a state.
Yeah, that's a good question. I don't know.
So, I think that maybe the, oh, sorry.
No, I just wanted, on the first example, I think part of it, because that was a commercial property. And there's, I saw a reference to ADA. Okay, and that's often an issue with public buildings or commercial buildings, especially older ones, as you start to upgrade. It's not just a residence. You have to have a compliant with ADA, so you can very likely have costly improvements to a bathroom, say, for accessibility.
I think that was an issue with City Hall even.
But, but they, they came in for a permit for landscaping and they were told they had to get their bathrooms.
Right, I, I didn't read it all. I just saw a commercial and I saw ADA referenced in there. Sometimes these sorts of things happen and it, it, it can involve an inspector say goes out to a site and you find numerous code enforcement violations that actually could be serious. Some things could be minor, so. I think if the intent is though to like, keep the focus on the project in hand and encourage people to get permits, not discourage them for things like air conditioners or bathroom fans. That's a good intent to try to get people to come in and get the work done correctly, not discourage them, so they hire somebody and we don't have a permit on file.
Yeah, what I'm proposing is for single-family homes only, so, just to streamline for minor repairs and small projects. So, yeah, I, I wasn't gonna touch commercial properties.
Right, that gets a lot more complicated.
Yes, exactly.
I like it. I think the, we'd have to frame it in the same way of like doing a feasibility study to make more minor repairs and they'd have to be very specific about what they are to be able to be put online as an online permit. Because I'm sure to Stephen's question, I know there's state laws about everything, right? So, as soon as you touch a bathroom, you have to replace the toilet. Like, I think that's, I'm not, I'm probably making up that that's how it's written. It's something along those lines. It's, it's kind of crazy, but you basically, you know, it's the same thing with showerheads. You can't buy a showerhead that doesn't meet California's water restrictions. So, you change it, you're gonna have to make it what the law says for the state, so we can't do much about any of those things. I don't think we're trying to streamline to a point that we're now butting up against what state law says, right? But at the same time, which I think why feasibility, feasibly, what could we do here? I, I'm not a hundred percent sure that there's too much, but I feel like somebody should make an honest effort to try.
Yeah, I'm, I'm actually a little torn about this one because this, this, you know, generally speaking, you know, if you, yeah, a lot of the, a lot of the a lot of the permit requirements and inspection requirements are the things that cause people to move to, you know, more efficient appliances and you know.
Yeah, make the upgrades in their house.
Yeah, I, I think you're probably right, but I think there's, there's also a lot of people that are just not getting permits because so, so I think there's probably a lot of revenue lost also. Because we're putting an undue burden on our residents by, you know, asking for thirty thousand dollar upgrade for a two hundred dollar job, you know.
No, I understand the desire to kind of get people to kind of, you know, go efficient and all that, but that cannot be, that should not be a forcing function. It should be, you know, people want to do it, right? So, and, and give them what they want, so long as, you know, it's within the bounds of, you know, meeting the requirements. Don't try to tack on, you know, more discouraging them to run away.
So, I don't know, are there any other, uh, any other areas of interest or recommendations? Maybe we should collect up, collect up the items we had. We can maybe summarize them. I think that we had one that was around looking at looking and incentivizing.
I'm, I'm typing them up.
Oh, okay.
So, so the first one was a, a expedited permit process to incentivize climate positive home improvements. The second one was the complete streets ordinance. Uh, the second one, a third one was the small business revitalization ordinance. And then the fourth one was, I don't have a name for it, but simplifying permits for minor repairs and small projects.
Yeah, I, I feel like there's, there's probably a, a study there. This would be something where, you know, given the opportunity, we would direct staff to try to take a look at the opportunities that may exist there. Again, I think that being able to do that in, you know, in this forum gives the opportunity, you know, there's an opportunity because it's noticed. People can kind of see, this is the sort of discussion we're having. There's an opportunity, you know, to really engage with the public. You know, um, you know, on those, on those topics.
And I guess with the, I would put for all of those, because we're trying to look at what's feasible, is to not recreate the wheel, but look at what bigger cities who have already invested a lot of time in this to just copy and paste.
Best practices.
Yeah, we don't need to be the, the frontrunner on some of these things.
Yeah, on the fourth one, the simplifying permits, I was trying to Google it. There is a few things, like Dallas has done a pretty good job of writing a thing like, you know, on how to make it easier for small projects and small repairs. So, we can, we can search for it because I think San Francisco's done small business stuff. So, there are lessons we can learn from other cities.
Do we have to vote on our list or is it?
I, I think we, we probably want to vote on having a recommendation. I feel great about the first three. The fourth one, I maybe, I think, I, I would probably rank that lower relative to the, the other three.
Should we each come up with our own votes or do you want to discuss it?
I, I don't know. I think we can make a recommendation, unless there's, unless, unless we're wildly apart on this.
With the fourth one is the.
Small repairs.
Small repairs. I mean, if, you know, if the planning department is okay with putting more permit stuff online, you know, I wouldn't object to that. But a lot of these permits, someone has to come out to your house anyway, you know, for a water heater or, you know, electrical panel, whatever.
It's amazing to me that you would actually need a permit for a bathroom fan change. It is, I mean, it is electric, right?
I would imagine a lot of people don't get them for things like that.
Right, but to your point, people don't do this.
Got a permit to replace a window, for example, but you need a permit for that.
Yeah, nobody does that.
I guess it's, because the, the permit cost is reflected, reflecting the cost of the inspection. The, the, I guess it's, because the, the permit cost is reflected, reflecting the cost of the inspection.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Um, I don't know, would, would somebody like to make a recommendation, uh, you know, make a motion?
Do you want to?
Gosh, I, this is hard, because I, I, the first three I feel like are much bigger in scope and much, maybe have a much more long-term impact on the city. I would make a recommendation to, to recommend to city council the first three that we discussed. Um, do I need to name all the three or is that okay? I think we all referenced what they are.
It's probably good to recap them and just.
So recap the.
Do you want me to do the motion?
Go for it.
Okay. So, uh, we recommend, uh, the, the, these three projects to be added to the city work program. Uh, the first one is expedited permits for climate positive home improvements. Second one is a complete streets ordinance. The third one is a small business revitalization ordinance.
Yeah.
Do we want to rank those? Um, wait, to me, the complete streets is something that actually, you know, is a concrete thing. The other two, um, I, I don't, you know, know what, what would actually be done on those, even though they're good ideas.
Are you suggesting an amendment to the?
Right, yeah, I would say a high priority is complete streets.
I will accept that modification.
Yeah, okay.
And then.
Somebody want a second?
I'll second.
Great. All right, let's vote. Great. Passes unanimously. Great. Um, so that sounds great. We'll, we will pass that on and I'm sure the council will wonder what it is exactly that we're recommending, uh, and we will be there to, uh, help, uh, help. I feel like we definitely had a, um, uh, we were of a like mind here on the, uh, on the dais. Um, next up on the agenda is staff and commission reports. Staff report.
Uh, staff does not have any additional report at this time.
Okay, great. Commission reports, any activities or things that people did? Uh, future agenda setting.
This is one I would like to, and we, we discussed this back in December, I believe, or maybe it was November, um, when planning department would give us an update on the housing element. Do we have, is it, is it feasible or realistic to have a, a staff report on where we are with the housing element, like at the next, in the next month or so?
I would say within the next month, maybe five, six weeks, but that timeframe and, um, I don't have a date. It would very likely could be a joint meeting with the housing commission as well. Um, because one of the issues we would want to be addressing would be policies and strategies, not necessarily just the sites that have been selected, which I think that's been covered. So, given the time issues of working with H C D, it very likely could be a joint meeting.
Okay. And then the other one, this is maybe my own curiosity more than it's for, uh, any policy. Do we, is it feasible to get staff to do an update on kind of some of the bigger stalled projects that are, that are in the city? And I mean by that, some of the ones that are on Stevens Creek, that major, major projects that essentially zero movement on and, and whether they're actually moving forward?
I suppose we could, we'd have to kind of look at what's meant by stalled.
Stalled is in more than two years without any.
Things that are already approved, though, okay.
Yeah.
Or five years.
Yeah, I mean, we've got the one, the Marina project, obviously Valco. Um, I know somebody intimated to Fontana's and Pete and all of that, that's new. But I think it would just be for the good of the community to know where we are, where, where the developers are with these projects.
Okay, so like Marina, um, the Hamptons was mentioned earlier as well. So I think we could look at a list of projects that are.
I think people are, you know, even though part of Westport is opening, obviously there's a major portion of that that's not.
But just sort of a status update, um, and the, you know, our website does have a major project list. I know sometimes it's not as current, but, um, we do try to keep that updated and well for projects like this.
Yeah, yeah.
So, so in the past, the, um, economic development, um, staff would, would generate that kind of major projects pager, page that had, it was usually just two pages, that had just a very brief, this is kind of where it's at, this is what happened, you know, in the last, uh, two or three months. Um, I believe that's what was being published on the website as well. Um, it would be great to see, you know, if, I, I don't even know what the state is right now of economic development, um, um, person, but, um, it would be great to have that be something that, uh, that is more visible and available.
Right, and also if you, how many A D U permits have been granted? Because when I talked to Puch, that initially when the state law passed, there was a, a, a lot of them. And then it's kind of tapered off to, to very, very few.
Yeah, I also would like to get, uh, S B nine, uh, applications, like, you know, how many lot splits have been applied and, you know, and granted and whatnot.
Yeah, is, is that something we could request? I know, maybe we'll make that into an agenda item, a standing agenda item, but it would be great if, you know, at least in the short term, if that were the.
Yeah, I think for the items that we've covered tonight, yeah, we could certainly look at, you know, you're just looking for a status update.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
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 Any other, any other issues here? I, I hope that, so, you know, it's interesting, right, that the fate of the small repairs. Um, I think that it would certainly be interesting, you know, we haven't got lots and lots of extra staff time to, um, to, you know, go do a, a survey of, of what, what's happening in different places. But I hope that, um, you know, the agenda setting may be a place where at least those items can get raised for consideration. And, you know, this is basically a mechanism, the community and the, the commission can, um, you know, raise that, raise that as an item to go to staff. If, if it can't be, if it can't be covered, you know, if there's not staff time available to do that, that research, you know, so be it. But at least there was an opportunity to kind of raise that up.
Yeah.
And track how, how those things were going.
Yeah, I, one comment, that's not really an agenda setting question. When can I ask that question? Or when would be the appropriate time to ask?
To ask which question?
So the, we continuously get public feedback that, you know, people are upset about canceling meetings.
Yeah, you know, that's actually not, on, in this particular agenda.
Yeah.
I mean, you can always reach out to, um, the staff liaison.
Oh, so my question was basically, how do we explain to the public the rationale behind a canceled meeting? Because I think there's a misconception about why they're canceled or what, what, what's happening behind the scenes. And I, I feel like there's a need to communicate generally what the reason is that meetings get canceled. So I think we all know, but I don't think the public generally knows.
You know, it, it's a good point. I mean, and I've just been here two years, so it sounds like there wasn't a history of that. But I know the several month period last year, there literally were not items to take. And there was nothing ready to bring forward to the commission. So, you know, which is why a lot of cities often have one meeting per month for that reason. Um, our code has second and fourth Tuesdays. Um, but I think it was just a case of timing where there really was not an item.
Yeah.
It wasn't a staff or certainly a commission issue.
Right.
But I, I can see how the public, because they see a cancellation notice, um, implies that there was a planned meeting with something there and now it's not happening. That was not the case for any of those meetings.
Right, yeah, that's, that's the concern. I feel like we somehow need to alleviate.
Yeah, I, I think the issue is, um, I understand, you know, there is not enough i- items to go on the agenda so the meeting gets canceled. The concern is, you know, this all was happening in the midst of, you know, housing element, uh, discussions and, you know, and iterations. That's the part that, you know, people are struggling with, like, you know, why would we cancel so many planning commission meetings in the midst of, you know, housing element, uh, approval process?
Yeah, okay.
In terms of future agenda items, um, I like your proposal about like the small repairs, like, I mean, without creating any staff time, we can certainly have like a discussion among us as to what kind of items would go on a, on, you know, a pro- project like that and open it up to community input as well. Same thing with like the small business revitalization thing, we could, you know, just come back, like do our homework and come back with what we think could be included in an ordinance like that, so just suggestion.
So pursuant to the commissioner's handbook, during this time, you, one, a commissioner can make a suggestion for a future agenda and then it requires a second, and then that list gets tallied up. Uh, the chair can advance their own, uh, items for agenda and those are discussed. Their agenda reviewed with the staff liaison and so that we can determine, you know, when to schedule them, when to agendize them.
Okay.
Just for future.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that.
Okay, so I'll propose two items. Uh, one is for the planning commission to discuss among ourselves potential things we could include in a, um, small repairs, uh, ordinance or I don't know what we would call it, yeah, I guess an ordinance.
I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Sorry, go ahead.
You should not be discussing things among yourselves outside this meeting for brown eye purposes.
No, no, I mean, in this meeting.
Oh, in this.
As an agenda item for future meetings.
Agenda item to discuss future agenda?
No, I'm proposing it as an agenda item for future meetings.
Oh, I see, okay.
Yes. So, so I think the, the interesting question, this is something where, where, you know, we would, we would seek your guidance on, uh, I'm not sure whether we ought to agendize it or not, which is us talking about something. Um, you know, I think the, the normal mode for something like this, um, like the small repair thing would be that we would probably want to give some direction to staff and then if there were staff, uh, resources that would allow, you know, a study of, you know, these are the kinds of things that are coming to the, now, you know, the, you, the determination may, may be that there's not enough staff time for that. I, I understand that. Um, and which is a perfectly good answer. Um, but the interesting question is, you know, what, what does it take to, uh, kind of ignite that discussion? You know, if, if, I, I suspect if we talk to the, to the planning desk people, they probably have a sense of, you know, they probably could, they probably have a sense of, it is common for people to ask for this permit and then not be very happy about what it turns out, you know, turns out to be.
I, I think it might be a good idea to get a, a report from the staff, like, you know, last one year or two years. What are the kind of different kinds of permits that we got, right? And how much time is being spent on each of those? Then review of that, you know, might tell us, you know, hey, this is an area that can be automated. Or this can be, you know, uh, you know, made easy, right? Whereas, you know, this one, yeah, this has to go through this approval process, right? So I think, you know, maybe that's what we need.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I mean, I'm fine with that. I was just proposing, you know, more of a community listening session, but, you know, because I was trying to be careful not to create work for the staff, but, yeah, I mean, if, if this commission wants to do that, that's fine.
Let's, let's talk about creating work for the staff, right? So we are getting a lot of meetings canceled, so then what is that staff is doing, right? We are saying, you know, we don't have, you know, enough applicants, you know, and all that, and we are canceling, you know, meetings. The staff is still there, you know, they gotta be doing something, right? So we, we should get them to do these things and, you know, bring forward a report and public can comment on, you know, yes, you know, these, these are the things, you know, we would like you guys, you know, to make it easy for us, right?
But, but I think that's a little bit of what the, what the work program things are, right? Because that, that really is ultimately, it's a question of, you know, the council will, will say, yes, we're going to approve. I mean, I mean, you saw all the items here were, were marked out for the number of staff hours that are required. So, you know, it's interesting, I think we're talking about things that are a lower level, that are, you know, ten and twenty hour projects, not four hundred.
Yeah.
Uh, now, maybe that problem is, maybe they're below the radar of what the, um, council wants to spend time talking about.
Yeah, you know, the, the reason I kind of, you know, got a little riled up on the staff hours is, uh, you know, these things that, you know, what we have on the list, they were always there every year, right? There was study items and, you know, staff spending time on, right? And so nothing changed, right? And we are canceling a lot of meetings. Then staff has hours to go work on these things and, you know, bring it to the s- commission so that, you know, public can, you know, comment on.
Okay, well, I, I don't think there's gonna be the cancellations like there was last year. I, I think that was something of an anomaly. Um, and even when the meetings are canceled, there is a lot of staff work getting done. Um, that's a fact. So, but I, I understand there are things that can be brought to this commission. I think a lot of what you asked for tonight, like providing updates, that's not a big staff time commitment. That's information that exists. It's a matter of organizing it and bringing it to you. Um, and I think we could be better about doing that more on a regular basis. Maybe say like a major project update, uh, staff reports at the end.
Like, you know, we approve, you know, two hundred and fifty on an average, you know, this kind of permits. And each one of them costs this much time and the effort. And we approve, you know, five thousand of these and each one costs, right? So then we have an idea like, you know, hey, this one, you know, that's it, that we should automate that, right?
Yeah.
The, the data should be there.
So it's really just to uphold the data.
Yeah.
All right. Yeah, I don't, I don't know whether, I don't remember the council getting a, getting a report like that, which was breakdown of, it's kind of a T-shirt, you know, small, medium, large of permit, you know, permits, uh, you know, what are the volumes? Uh, you know, what kinds of things are typical in those? You know, I think that, that sounds like that, that's actually the information that, that people would be interested in here. Like, how many, how many tree permits, you know, uh, you know, come and things like that.
So do you, do you want to make a motion?
Pardon?
Yeah.
Do you want to make a motion?
Yeah, like, uh, we, we would like, you know, a staff to bring forward, I, I don't know, um, if somebody can describe it better. Mostly what I'm looking for is, you know, we want a staff report on the permits, you know, how, and, and a study session on that and, you know, where we can weigh in and, you know, public can weigh in.
Yeah, maybe, maybe I could try here. Uh, we'd be interested in looking at a staff report that breaks down the, the, the number and kind of size of, of permits. We probably also want to split that kind of, um, you know, developer, developer focus versus resident.
Residents.
Focus, yeah.
And how long it took to approve each one of them?
Yeah.
Yeah, each one of them, what's the cost, time and, you know, money and, you know, and how much time it takes.
To the extent that this data exists, yeah.
I'll second that motion, whoever made it.
You don't need to vote, it just needs someone to, to, yeah, you don't need to vote, it just needs two. And so that's, that's an item that we can discuss to place on the agenda.
Okay.
Anything else?
No, sounds good. I think he already captured those, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Anything else? All right, with that, at eight thirty-two, we'll adjourn the meeting.